Hey, here we go. Thank you, everybody. Friday, March 4th, 2022, nine o'clock AM. Special meeting called by the O I Correctional System Oversight Commission, just to, you know, discuss some of our legislative actions and see what's going on in terms of some of the bills that we've been supporting and we've been testifying on or providing testimony. And so as we are in the middle of the legislative session, let's begin and have some conversations on how do we continue to move forward on this? I see everybody in the room right now. You guys want to share with us what's going on from your perspective in terms of our legislative ask? I'm sorry, trying to get where I can see everybody.
Yeah, Mark, this is the time for the public input.
Yeah, yeah. No, I wanted to put them so I could see them all. Okay. I'm open to testimony right now, right next to the commissioners. I'll just start calling out names. Carrie Anne, you prepared?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Carrie Anne.
Aloha Chair Patterson, Commissioners, Carrie Anne Chiruta on behalf of the ACLU. So legislative update on our end, I'll just focus on our priority bills for this session and where they're at. So the bills that are still alive, unfortunately, that list is smaller than the ones that are dead. So the first one would be HB 2344, that is probation reform. The House measure is alive, but unfortunately, it was gutted of the substantive provisions. The Senate version, which the draft from Senator Nishihara's office was the version that we supported, and the judiciary and the Senate side held it in part because they said that the House bill was still alive and they would let it cross over. So the ACLU will be advocating that we put back in the amendments from the Senate draft to actually have meaningful probation reform. So in terms of getting the bill, I can just highlight that what they essentially did is rather than removing prohibiting revocations for probation and allowing for earned time credits, they implemented a language that would say midway point of probation term that they would just do a review. So it's a review, no substantive outcome, and that they had the discretion to issue a probation essentially notice to the person that maybe revoked what the rationale reasons for it. So it would not substantively really change our probation reform process. Nonetheless, that's still alive. On the parole bills, unfortunately, both of them are dead, the parole reform. Despite the fact that you may have seen Kevin Dayton did that article this past week showing Department of Justice data that overall there were releases more on the front end of the system during COVID, which continues. But on the tail end of the system, there were decreases in releases by 30% reduction, which should be concerning for all of us. I mean, we had the 30% highest rate of decreases and releases during the pandemic compared to any other state that showed the need for reform. Nonetheless, parole pushed back hard, and so did Attorney General's Office to the parole reform bill. And I was essentially told that they want to wait to give them additional time to wait for further improvements to build upon their improvements. The ACLU will be advocating again next year and coming back advocating for that parole reform. When we take a look at the numbers and the statistics from parole itself, from the Department of Public Safety and revocations and their annual statistical report, we actually see that the rates of revocation for technical are much higher in parole than actually probation. So that's disheartening news. The Clean Slate Bill, both the Senate version as well as the House version, never even got a hearing on either side. We were told that there were some other quote expungement bills in the legislative hopper. These were a piecemeal type of bills, and I don't even know if they're alive yet. I need to go back and check over the weekend, as Martha mentioned, given the time deadlines. So that is something that the ACLU will continue working with other coalition groups in the community to have a comprehensive clean slate bill next session. The remaining bills for us relating to bail reform, our preferred bill bills did not get a hearing either, but HB 1567, which is the bill that was introduced by Representative Mateo She and Senator Rhodes is still alive. The Senate version didn't have a hearing, but the House version is going to cross over to the Senate. And the ACLU will be advocating for amendments to reduce some of the carved out exceptions. Currently, there I counted 18 carved out exceptions, and I did create a table side by side so you could see the differences between the ACLU, the bill that we were supporting for probation bail reform versus the other bill. And with questions to guide lawmakers, what are they looking to effectuate in terms of outcomes? Are they trying to set a goal or objective in reducing the pretrial population by 5%, 10%, 30%, 40% has been done as in New Jersey? And that should be some guiding measures for that. As far as the moratorium on the jail, as you know, that bill did not was not introduced, but the pause bill was introduced. It was killed. I believe that Bob Morse may have notified you that there's still one bill still alive. It does not pause the jail planning per se, but it does limit the governor's ability to negotiate with a private entity to own or operate a private prison in Hawaii, and it also prohibits them from doing the lease buyback option, our interpretation of it at this point. So those are the ones that are alive. I believe that Kat Brady will not be here today, that she has some other some litigation that's going on. But in terms of some other bills that may have been interest to you, there's an appropriation bill for a community-based reentry program. That's still alive and a number. See Jen Wilbur is here. I'll let her speak on the work for low program, but there are a number of other reentry type bills from the reentry planning circles to diversion funding through the judiciary for women in particular. A number of the bills that have been supported by the Women's Prison Project are still moving forward with appropriations. So on the reentry end, it's positive. And one other bill that may be of importance to all of you, you submitted testimony is on the identification. So currently, the law requires Department of Public Safety to provide individuals with IDs prior to their release. In the testimony that's come out, the Department of Public Safety is supporting this new measure, which essentially says that rather than that they shall, which is mandatory, that they their only duty would be to advise individuals if they are interested into a system rather than providing the identification. So the ACLU did submit comments and were saying that we should not water down the responsibility of the department at minimum. We know that comprehensive reentry, there are many facets to it, but at minimum, if a person's liberty is taken away and they're incarcerated, the minimum that the state can do to help them access other services benefits from housing to prescription medication is an identification. Simultaneously, there is another measure, and I can send this through an email. There's lots of bill numbers. There's a limited ID civil identification bill, which the immigration rights community has been supporting. And others in the community did chime in and requested that it also be used for individuals who are exiting our jails and prisons. So the Senate bill version has documentation that individuals could use to obtain the civil limited ID. It's a discharge parole paper as well as discharge from the Department of Public Safety. So that one is still alive and that may have been interested the commission. My end, and I can follow up and send an email with the bill numbers if you would like. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm looking for anyone else that might want to have some comments on what they've noticed in the legislative session with some bills. I can only see Carrie Anne, some of you, any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners, this may be a short conversation, but any concerns at this time before I kind of begin to go into some of these things that was just mentioned? Are we all following it on our own?
I have not been that good about following all them. So Carrie Anne, that's another reason I'd like to get the bill numbers. Thank you.
I'll send you what I've been tracking. I believe Carrie Anne's will probably be more understand understandable, but we did get. Where do I begin? Understanding what we have been seeing politically with the building of the new jail and what has been happening with that. Well, it's dead. Yeah. It's not, when you listen to what Carrie Anne just presented in terms of what's happening with probation and the way that's being gutted. Parole no longer being considered, those bills, the expungent and the bail reform, and I believe, you know, in our last conversation, we talked about continually supporting the putting back the class C felonies, nonviolent. Yeah, because they took that out. Yeah. But it's, it appears when I try and look at it from a systemic point of view, as strong as they are in the hopes to build this, this outrageous cost of a jail, there like seem to be a lack of understanding of what of any kind of system reform. Yeah.
It's a lack of interest, not understood.
Lack of interest. Yeah. So we are really at the front end. It kind of reminds me of everything that was said about the rail. And yet they still built it. And now we're go everything that was said is happening. You know, and it's because, you know, that price is just skyrocketing. You know, I don't even know where it's at now. So that's where we are at the specific point in time, and it's really kind of frustrating at one point, because I think we've said it more than often that, you know, what Hawaii really needs is, and I don't think it's a substantial amount of investment as they're making with not just the jail building, but the 50 million for more planning. Yeah, is how much, how much resources are being put to reform?
Hey, Mark.
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Carrie Anne, this, this is not, I guess it's intended as a softball question, but maybe I don't understand why the legislature, why we don't do away with cash bail. Because if we have cash bail and we don't build a prison, we're guaranteeing ourselves to build some kind of little anthill or keep it like it is. It seems to me a double whammy. I don't understand. What is your take?
That's a good question, Judge Town. I think part of it is, it is political will. I think part of it, I keep hearing, I can say that in conversations with some of the lawmakers, particularly their staff, I've lost count of the number of times that people have just reminded me that it is an election year. And that during election year, lawmakers are more conservative because they're afraid of controversial bills that will. And, and from what I understand, you know, the bail in light of the recent murder that happened, particularly outside of the Capitol. Now, from a systems perspective, we can talk about the lack of mental health services. The fact that this individual was exhibiting violent behavior, not only in a group home, but also towards the police. He was released, even though he was showing that he was a risk of violence. Whereas other people who are not violent, no evidence to support it, not a slight risk, we keep them in because we're poor. And so part of it is political will, you know, the ACLU will again be introducing the bill. We're going to continue to push for amendments. But I can say that because it's an election year, we are seeing this very much like stepping back, not getting hearing on a clean slate bill, which even in other states were less controversial. You know, there tends to be a lot of support for second chances. So part of it is timing. The second part of it, I think, is like the coalition building. There's a faith-based community that put out an piece this past week to support bill, which was wonderful. I think hearing from more voices, I can share with you in some of the conversations that lawmaker staff have mentioned, they have been looking at testimony from the Oversight Commission. So I think it's, it is a matter eventually when you have staff and you're moving forward, they will be looking more towards Oversight Commission, but I think using the, your body to say you've been tasked with this responsibility. It's interesting, like on the parole bill, they were essentially looking at Attorney General's testimony and parole and saying, we don't need this. Even though Oversight Commission was weighing in and we were putting in our testimony, actual data, not the data that we've collected just on our own, but actually coming from the departments themselves. And as Kevin did, it highlighted from the Bureau of Justice, you know, justice statistics itself. But anything that's perceived as controversial this year, it's not going to move forward. So whether Bill even proceeds the session is a big question mark. I think it is a lightning rod, and so some lawmakers will just be very, very timid. We're going to push for class C. When you look at the numbers, we definitely need to have classy inside to have any substantive change. But it may not happen this session.
Are you telling them, Carrie Anne, that in many states, what we call a classy felony is a misdemeanor?
Judge, we have tried to highlight the fact that, you know, what we, how we classify, even if you hear the word felony, I think part of it is again, some of it is a misunderstanding, right? We hear the word felony, we auto, some people automatically think the worst of the worst scenario. So I think part of it is education. I think again, some lawmakers just don't want to be seen as quote being soft on, on, on crime. Still, despite the evidence that they're not tough on crime doesn't mean smart on crime, as all of us know. And so it's going to take some time. I think the other thing that lawmakers are maybe not taking into the consideration is that in other states, there have been lawsuits filed and deemed that their bail system is unconstitutional. So that could always be, you know, in the backdrop as well, but I'm hoping that lawmakers will make some changes. Senator Rhodes' office from judiciary, they felt that in part that this bill that they're pushing HB 1567, they believe that there is a chance to get it passed potentially without class C. But I think that they, their mindset is that we want to start somewhere and that they will take an incremental change rather than having nothing maybe this session and time will tell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other bills, when we, going back to the line of thought, and thank you, Carrie Anne. Part of, part of what I'm trying to articulate is really we can watch this day by day, or we can get a kind of a sense of where this is going. Yeah. And as a commission, how are we going to focus on, you know, the, any of the legislative session and our work after? Yeah, because we are, we are hoping that during this legislative session, that laws can be changed that will help us in aiding and oversighting for the, for the reform that is needed in regards to our correctional system. When we look at the reentry efforts, yeah, and carry on, it's so hard, you know, I'm glad you brought it up, but I don't like to focus on it, but it's, you know, part of it is just reality that when you said election year, you know, and when you look at the reentry bills, a lot of them is really around women, yeah, which is a good thing. They're, they're having a good push. And sometimes I've always believed you got to start small and pilot something in order for the bigger system to understand that it is doable. But even in that sense, sometimes it doesn't even work. Yeah, I mean, you know, something happened where we were able to, you know, the women went to the mainland in the mid 90s because we didn't have enough beds. You know, a lot of things happened with the women in the mainland, but in 2009, we were able to simulate them back into the system because there were beds. You know, so what happened? Yeah.
You know, we got to think the women went to the mainland because we were over incarcerating in the state of Hawaii. I wonder if we didn't have enough beds. The policies were not supporting having a smaller population.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is, once we realized how to do it, it was done on a smaller scale. But it was never modeled up to the larger, to the bigger population. That's just one example.
But we also have to remember why the women were brought home. And that was because there was allegations of sexual abuse by staff in the Tennessee facility.
Well, I understand that, but it, there were others in the other states as well, but there were not no place for them to come home. Yeah. Colorado, Oklahoma. So all I'm saying is, we have had examples in our systems of when community judiciary and reentry efforts came aboard, were aligned, and beds were made available. Yeah. And for some reason, it's just, it gets stuck when we try to apply that to the larger system with the men. Because in our efforts and our work with the commission is in how do we manage the oversight of the public safety in order to get these things done? Because if I, this, the whole work with the legislative session is to try and get policy in place to help us enforce policy and law. Yeah, but right now, they're, they're just doing really light work. And like, as Carrie Anne used, stated, a lot of the bills that had some substantial meaning in order to create systemic change or create reform have been gutted. Yeah, so it's really a shallow bill. I know Judge Ybar would say, you know, and I, and I agree, small steps, you know, let's get something in there and then work off of it, you know, if we can get any victory, a victory will be as small as we can get it to build upon it in the future. I do know that and that's, that's pretty much where I'm at right now. You know, looking at the system reforms and then the reentry reforms, it's really not a real clue on how important these bills are and how it can affect the overall capacity of our, of our system. Just not be, go ahead, Martha.
We've talked about this before. Ron has been a support proponent of this. We need to start an education campaign. We need to be meeting with legislature during the interim. We need to really start lobbying. Now, we've been held back for two reasons. Number one, we don't have staff and number two, the COVID. I haven't been to the Capitol in two years, and that's where you meet the legislators. But unless we start these education process and start winning people over during intercession so that we don't have to start pushing during the session, we're not going to get very far. It's a good thing they are at least listening to our testimony, so it gives us some heft. We don't have the heft that the Women's Prison Project has with Lingle and Hanabusa being part of that, but it does give us, we're being acknowledged to a certain extent.
Yes.
Mark, just follow up on that, you know, most people think cash bail, I guess, affects public safety or keeps the public safe. But realistically, if you think about it, the bottom line is in the long run, it does not protect public safety because technically, theoretically, you know, people or the law enforcement wants to impose cash bail to hold somebody in jail pending trial disposition, saying the person is a threat to the public. But technically, that person can post a bail. Yeah. Then, then what happens? So they come in to raise the bill again, but let's call a spade a spade. If that person is a threat to public safety, hold them without bail. Because you put cash bail, the person comes in, posts a bail. And actually, so it really is a, a, not a, a good mechanism. Maybe overnight, yes, you're going to hold them because they can't post the bail, you know, and they get arrested. But if they, in the long run, finds someone to post a bail technically, they may, they can post it, and I see it often, what happens is the prosecutor then comes in to try to increase the bail again. So, you know, the person, a bail is set, the person posts a bail, and the prosecutor comes and moves, moves to increase the bail because the person posted a bail. And so it's really not fair to the system. It really gives a false sense of security to the victims. You know, when you tell the victim, don't worry, the person's in jail because he or she can't post a bail. That's not true. In the long run, the person may be able to post the bill and the person comes out of jail versus telling that victim, look, that person is in jail without bail because he or she is a threat to you or the public. And so, you know, I think we need to inform the public because people just say, well, $1 million bail. Oh, okay, the person's in jail. But really, technically, realistically, that person, you know, maybe practically might not be able to get the money. But let's call a spade a spade. The person is a threat to the community, don't impose any bail at all, hold them without bail. And that's the message we should send out to the community. Most people in the community, well, the person makes bail, is out and give, well, it shouldn't have set the bill to begin with if the person is a danger.
No. It's, it's, it's a matter, I mean, even in this, independent, who says it, you hear safety used in all, in all manners and forms. It's, it's, it's a catchword, even within the management of a correctional institution. Safety is thrown around a lot, and it's always the fallback. And there's an expectation that a certain action will create the 100% safety that is being asked for, when in reality, it normally doesn't. Safety's always been a combined effort.
You know, at, at KCCC, when Neil Wakatsuma was the warden, he came to a warden's meeting and he told us of one case where a homeless guy had $10 bail and couldn't make it. And Neil was just going, you know, we're running this jail, all these staff and stuff for $10. Why was he being held in jail? You know, he didn't have the $10, but it was just ridiculous that anybody should ever be sent to jail on a $10 bail. Mark, we don't have answers today.
No, I know it's really stuck, but I just wanted to have a, just a short discussion on where we are and where I believe the legislative session is going at this particular point in time. Yeah, like you said, Martha, I believe some of the individuals who are present today that we're in, we're in the, what the canoe people will say, we're in the dog rooms right now, and it's going to, and it's going to get rough again within another week or so. And I think that's when, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that, you know, Ron and Martha apologized to the community, you know, we're getting there on our ability to navigate this website. Though, and trying to, trying to figure out how to get us all on a testimonial stage so that we can offer something now. And, you know, this is really the most I've ever participated in the, in the legislative process and finding out that, yes, the written testimony is good, but they need to hear the verbal.
Yeah.
You know, and I haven't been as good as I should have been, but I'm learning this now.
You know, another advantage of hearing the verbal is when you just say, I stand on my testimony, the audience does not know what your testimony is.
Right.
And they don't know what the content is. So again, just as long as you have some bullets and say, we support this bill because, and it's one, two, three, and you just give them the bullets, it lets the audience know where we stand.
So that, so, you know, I thank those of me in the community who have been sending me emails and saying, hey, Mark, this is coming up. This is coming up. All the commissioners have been getting it as well. We're going to be a little bit more active on the second half of the session as things cross over. And, you know, I think there's, there's me representing the commission and then the rest of you, or we can figure this out, we can go in with our own personal testimonies and be present. Yeah, as a group rather than just one of us being there. As everyone knows, each of us have our own specialties that can, some of us are better on certain bills than others. Yeah, but we want to make a commitment as we push forward on some of these key bills, if not all, that we're supporting to, to make our best effort to attend. Just a call out for all the commissioners. And I'll be keeping in touch with you folks on when those are coming up as well. But that's where we are, you know, I knew this was going to be. I'm sorry, I just cut that chat. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're monitoring that as well, Carrie Anne, you know, but I do know that we had a personal conversation when we first brought it up that that was an internal matter, but you know, we'll, we'll look more into that. Okay. So that's where we are right now. Okay. I don't think I have anything further to, to talk about. Any of the commissioners have anything else to say with the community at this time? And we can bring some closure to the meeting. Carrie Anne, any last thoughts?
I guess we'd like to add in terms of the public education and outreach that Martha speaks of to build relationships with lawmakers, particularly the chairs of Public Safety and Judiciary Committee and Finance. I think having outreach with even the judiciary, because I noticed that this year, some of the testimony from the judiciary, they put comments, and in some measures, they actually outright oppose some measures that are considered reform and adult client intake services is under judiciary, but the, if you were to But the, if you were to read the testimony, the written testimony, and then put it side by side by the prosecutor's office and attorney generals. There were very similar talking points or rational reason, and typically the judiciary takes the more measured, oftentimes just comments versus oppose or support. And so that's concerning just from our perspective as well. So it seems like judiciary oftentimes. Maybe even having outreach and discussing some of these measures with them may be fruitful for future relationship building and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Caroline?
You're S? Hello?
Can hear you.
I read one of the other individual testimonies on, on solitary. It was one by Barbara Polk, and she mentions how. DPS is able to go around. The guidance and really is still using solitary. What, however they want to. That's what's her implication. So I. She was recommending some kind of more specific language, but I think it's too late for that. I don't know. I don't know how, how specific the language is in that bill, it's. Somehow it wasn't specific enough for her, but I should talk to her, I guess. She's a neighbor, actually.
Thank you, Carolyn, appreciate that, and. I'm trying to remember, is the use of solitary confinement even in the policies of public safety?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. I always just, from my perspective, I always think of administrative segregation.
Yeah. Well, that's more of the same thing, administrative segregation.
I know, I know, I know, but I've never seen the word solitary confinement.
I don't think we use the word solitary confinement.
Administrative segregation, right?
I think Mark and Martha, they require a special hearing. You know, make, if we don't have, if we have bails, not cash bail. Then that, that means the prison's not going to be as populated, and that means more people out, hopefully, working and taking care of business. And you're going to have fewer people misbehaving and getting in solitary. This is a, I'm feeling whipsawed by some of the, by what I'm hearing from the community.
Yeah, okay. We'll follow up on the, further and, and read more into the bill, it's just a. From experience of the use of administrative segregation was always a, an administrative move from a higher level.
As, as Mike said, it required due process. If someone is going to admin seg, they have due process, there are hearings and stuff.
Yeah.
And there were finally limitations put on them, because we would have people in solitary for very long periods of time. Sometime, I think over a year, at times, where now, and even in our old policy, people used to get around. Certain restrictions by letting them out for one day and then suddenly sticking in again.
Yeah, because I was just about to say, there was, there was a certain amount of time, and then there was also a loophole in how you deal with that.
That way, put them back in general pop for one day and then yank them back on something else. So. But I have no idea what the practice is now. I know we had improved over what we were 20 years ago, we improved a lot. I couldn't tell.
And, you know. It's one of those subjects, Carolyn, that, that touches on a lot of the other issues we talk about. Yeah, and when you talk about administrative segregation, there's a mental health component to that as well. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, so. Like I said, I haven't really reviewed that, but we'll take a look at it and we'll, we'll see what, where, you know, how, with Carrie Anne's help, follow that and see where it goes. So with no further ado, thank you, everybody, for your comments and for being here.
Meeting is going to be on March 17th, St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
Thursday, we do have to say when our next meeting is going to be.
Yeah, that's our regular scheduled meeting. I think we said it in the last meeting as well. We're going to ask everyone if you can wear green.
I believe it's also Queen Kapilani's birthday.
Okay.
And Mark, in Gaelic, we say.
Okay, I don't even want to ask you how you spell that, so. You folks all have a great day, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Thank you so much.